Oh, boy.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah. Let's not even go there.
All conserving.
All right, good morning, everyone. A call to order, the March 28th meeting of the Delaware County Council. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Donna, would you kick us off today?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Denise, was the agenda posted?
Yes.
Fantastic. All right, at this time, I would ask for a motion to amend our agenda. We had an update to our salary ordinance come through yesterday. So if I could get a motion to amend our agenda to place the ordinance reading after the transfer and appropriation agenda.
Motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, motion by Eugene, second by Dan. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Fantastic. A motion on the amended agenda. Can we get a roll call, please?
Uh, Mr. Flanagan.
You're present.
Mr. Hughes.
Present.
Mr. Cantz.
You're here.
Ms. Lassiter.
Here.
Ms. Piper.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Ms. Wyed.
Present.
All right, so that was roll call. Sorry, my bad. So now, let's do a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Eugene. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
All right.
What was the first motion for?
It was actually going to be the roll call. Is what the first one ended up being.
Okay.
My apologies. All right, then, I'll entertain an approval of the February 28th council meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by, was that Eugene?
Yes.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Obstain.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, fantastic. Moving on to our transfer and appropriation agenda. Donna, Tanya, you're up.
There is microphone down there. We need wood down there. Thanks. Donna.
While we're working on the microphone, everything was favorable for the transfers from our finance committee, which last week consisted of Dan, Matt, and Bill. So thank you, Dan, for filling in for me.
Pleasure.
And most of these are backfilling of employees. We haven't got there yet because we needed a microphone. So let's reread.
Okay, starting again. County General, Family Support Division, 237. D-103, 4D Assistant, negative 23,0094474. E-103, 4D Assistant, positive 23,0094474, for a total transfer of zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Okay, next is Auditor 126. We have 103, Senior Settlement Deputy Advisor, negative $18,306. A-103, Senior Settlement Deputy Budget Advisor, positive $18,306. A-118, Taxing and Abatement Deputy, negative $16,94043. B-118, Special Tax, TIF and Abatement Deputy, positive $16,94043. A-110, C of E, TA, Special Tax Deputy and Abatements, negative $15,84761. B-110, Special Tax and Settlement Deputy, positive $15,84761. B-102, Chief Deputy Auditor, negative $28,61445. C-102, Chief Deputy Auditor, positive $28,61445, for a total of zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, moving on.
Okay, moving on to other. We have Ball Brothers Jump, 9205. 176 Health Insurance, negative 23150. 325 Phone for Installation, positive 23150. Total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Awesome, moving on.
Opioid, 8199. We have 231 Incentives, negative 5,83548. 400 Kiosk, positive 5,83548, for a total of zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions?
I have a quick question.
Yep.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, I was just curious, um, what exactly the details are on this, the incentives for the kiosks.
Emily Anderson, Court Administrator. This is a grant that's brought in, I think, twice a year. And so, we need to pay the kiosk now because it's a monthly lease. We had to ask the grant, state grant people, if we could move money out of incentives into the, to the grant for the lease to cover the kiosk until we get more money, and then we'll put money back into incentives. So we're just moving money around to cover the lease for the kiosk. The kiosk is for the probation, or the probationers that don't actually have to go in and see a probation officer, they just check in on that kiosk.
Oh, okay. That's, that's what I was looking for, thank you.
That's the exact same thing I was about to ask, so, thank you, Ryan.
Perfect. All right, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Great, moving on.
CASA Capacity Building Grant, 9113. 102 Child Home and School Visitor, negative 3,077298. A-102 Child Home and School Visitor, positive 3,077298, for a total of zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Jail Loa, 1170. B-106 Correctional Officer, negative 29,85848. C-106 Correctional Officer, positive 29,85848, total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, moving on.
Highway 1176. A-120 Equipment Operator, negative 35,34680. B-120 Equipment Operator, positive 35,34680, total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Moving on.
ARP Coronavirus Recovery Fund, 8950. 100 Retention Bonus, negative $50,000. 101 Employee ARP Administration Cost, positive $50,000, total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions?
Can we get an explanation on this, please?
Thank you.
Yes. Basically, what it is, the 199 line item, it needs to be moved into a 101 line item so that W2 employee can be paid.
Thank you.
A 199 to a what?
101. O to W.
Yeah.
Hold on, I'm sorry. Are we talking about the ARP administration costs?
Mm-mm.
Move to employee to be paid?
No.
Okay, I thought I heard that wrong. So this is...
As soon as the money can be applied to the line item of that employee.
Okay.
Because you can't be, receive a 1099 after W2 employee.
Gotcha. Thank you, Ed.
All right, any further questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, moving on.
Ineligible Homestead Auditor, 1216. 103 Settlement Budget Advisor, negative 1,0065582. A-103 Settlement Budget Advisor, positive 1,0065582. A-118 Special Taxing and Abatement, negative $280.30. B-111 Insurance Clerk Paymaster, positive $280.30, total transfer zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions?
I would, I would like some clarification on the, the settlement aspect of it. Can anybody speak to that?
Yes, essentially, um, the first line item is Donna, she's retiring. So the person taking her place, which will be Tanya, we stepped in that role, so that money's gone to Tanya.
Oh, so it's just the difference of an employee transfer? Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All right, moving on.
Okay, next, we have the addendums. Under Other, CFDA Voca Grant, 9116. 102 Child Home and School Visitor, negative 24,030.44. A-102 Child Home and School Visitor, positive 24,030.44, total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Moving on.
Highway Department, 1176. We have D-144 Truck Driver, negative 30,95568. E-144 Truck Driver, positive 30,95568. C-131 Truck Driver, negative 36,87984. D-121 Truck Driver, positive 36,87984, total zero.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions?
I have one quick question. On the, um, the differences, the $6,000 difference, is the, um, the one truck driver got some, some pretty good years of experience that left?
Um, no, not really. The one truck driver, he, he's only been here maybe a couple months.
Okay.
He's not been here that long. The other one, he's been here, I think, going on two years. But that one is going to move to the equipment operator spot that we had open.
So there's...
Just approved.
So that's about a standard difference from two years, $6,000?
Well, he didn't, he didn't start till later in the year, and then he had some time off in there, so that's why there's a difference in pay.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the transfers. Moving over to our financial tab.
Okay, under Financials, County General, we have Communications, 124. This is, 197 is the number we gave it. Lateral Transfer, positive $20,000, for a total of $20,000.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions?
I'd like to give Fred an opportunity to explain it on the record, what exactly this is.
Fred Cummings, 911 Director. So these are, these are stipends or lateral transfer bonuses, basically. We are hovering around the three to four openings all the time. What this is designed to do is bring people in that are experienced in 911 communications by providing them a $5,000 signing bonus, I guess we'll call it. One of the questions that came up in Finance by Councilman Hughes was having a, having a set policy for how we do these. And so, we, we did draft that. It was given to John Brook and approved by John Brook. So, um, these aren't just going to be paid to people off the street, they're actually going to be paid to people that actually have experience that will cost us less to train.
One of the things, as I spoke with, with Mr. Cummings about this, my concern was about the, when these lateral transfers would receive the money. And I believe it was on like two installments. And my concern was based off of our experience with the ARP money, people taking their, their bonus and then, and then leaving. He was, he explained to me that we spent about $15,000 in, in training for a new hire anyway. So on the off chance that this, this would be a skilled position, so that's likely that that would, wouldn't happen in the first place. But if it did, we would already have spent way more than that $5,000 lateral transfer bonus just in training. So that kind of pretty much eased my concerns as far as, um, giving them the money in those two installments. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to state your case and so I could put that on the record.
And Fred, what is, how long does it typically take to train someone to be on the floor?
It can take anywhere from three to six months. So by bringing somebody in on a lateral transfer, they're already trained in EMD, and, and we just have to train them to our policies.
And Fred, just to be clear, so it's 20K for total, 5K per position, potentially?
And... Up to four positions.
That's only if you really end up using it this year, which, if not, they'll get it back.
That's a good point, Mr. Cantz. One of the things he also said was that you've got 18 to work there. So anybody who has a high school senior who's not going to college and not sure what they want to do, get in touch with Fred.
Any additional questions?
Yes, I have a question. Based off what came out of Finance Committee, Mr. Cantz wrote that the first part of this would come in six months and the last part would come at the end of a year, is that correct?
So, so, pretty close, but... We would pay the first half after they completed our training program.
Okay.
Um, which, which for an experienced person isn't going to be a long period of time. The second half would be six months after that.
Okay.
I think you also commented that we're not alone in offering signing bonuses, we're competing with other counties that were doing similar type programs.
Yeah, throughout the country, they range from anywhere from $2,000 to $25,000. So everybody's, everybody's competing for the same pool of people.
Any additional questions?
Yes, so this isn't just for experienced hires?
This is just for experienced hires.
Okay. Then the length of time for training, in your opinion, should be well less than that, three months, correct?
It'll be a lot less than that. We're probably figuring four to eight weeks. I mean, it's not going to be that long. If you have somebody experienced, they're already certified to do EMD and, and, and all the stuff they need to do, we just have to train them how we do things.
Yeah, I miswrote that in the notes. But to your point, that's why it's a lateral transfer, the goal being trying to find people from other departments or other areas.
One of the things that come up that, when I was asking questions as well, was, I believe there's what, three to four openings you've had for the year, pretty much?
Yeah, perpetually, it's like three or four openings, so...
So in my head, when I'm thinking about, we're given 20 new thousand, $20,000 in an additional appropriation. Those three to four positions have already been funded for the year, there's not been employees in those positions, so it's, I look at it as a wash, that money's not been spent, so it's basically the same thing. So I think it's good outside of the box thinking, and I appreciate you doing it.
And I'd be remiss if I don't remind everyone that we did get a substantial increase with our inter-local agreement from the city. So for your department, we have a little extra anticipated revenue coming in.
Good point.
That makes some of these decisions possibly a little easier for some of us. All right, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Prosecutor.
Prosecutor, 137. B-102 Deputy Prosecutor, 10,000, positive $10,698. B-103 Deputy Prosecutor, positive $10,698. B-113 Deputy Prosecutor, positive $10,698. B-115 Deputy Prosecutor, positive $10,698. C-104 Deputy Prosecutor, positive $10,698. C-106 Deputy Prosecutor, positive $10,698. 185 Transcripts, $8,000. 186 Stipend, positive $15,500. Then 398 Witness Fees, positive $18,000. 311 Legal Services, positive $24,000. That makes a total of $129,688.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, and I know we're going to have plenty of questions for you, so...
Actually, I had a question. Bill, is it, or Donna, or Tanya, that stipend number, didn't we move...
Tanya, to let?
Lit into this, so it should have been the 30, the full 30, so...
No. What you did was, when you get to lit, we advertised the total in lit for both the lit stipend.
Oh, that's right, okay. We just, we just reduced that.
You reduced lit back.
Okay, okay.
When you get to, uh, so I'll, I'll have Tanya, we were just talking about it.
That's right.
Let's have her read the 15,000 that you suggested we reduce.
Sorry about that, yep.
Thank you for the reminder. All right. Questions for the prosecutor?
We've had discussion on this before. Do you want to give a quick overlay, quick, for the record?
Sure. So this started, um, last, I believe, August, um, after we had a horrendous July in terms of homicides and murders. I knew there was an issue with understaffing and, and underpay. I just wasn't sure how to fix it at that point. Again, that was after budget time, after the budgets were, were due. So I sat down with my chief deputy, Zach, and we started to come up with some ideas. Those materialized a little in December when I sent another letter to the council outlining it a little more, and a little clearer with some figures. And then, um, I believe we, I think that's when we submitted the proposal with the spreadsheet, and then we sat down with individual members of the council after that. The bottom line is, um, if we don't, we, we haven't had, let me back up. We've had two prosecutors leave for better employment, um, last October and last December. leave for better employment last October and last December. The one that left in October, we have not been able to fill. So, that's six months that Judge Feig has not had a deputy prosecutor in his court. And if we don't do something soon, the criminal justice system in Delaware County is coming to a screeching halt. I believe it to be a public safety issue, there are just not enough employees to prosecute these high-level violent felony offenders. So, I started looking around at the other counties in the state who are hiring and we're not competitive in terms of salary. So, the figures that I submitted, I believe, make us competitive and I think we'll be able to retain employees that way. With regard to the witness fees and the legal transcripts and so on, those figures, or those budgeted figures are really outdated. And with, you know, the more violent crime you have, the more murders, the more witness fees, the more transcript fees you're going to have. I looked yesterday and we have already spent through trials and preparation for trials, over 50% of the budgeted witness fees and over 50% of the legal services, which is transcript fees. And we're only, we're not even in April yet. So, I think that's a short, concise statement of where we are.
This is a tough one for me because I feel like the two years I've been on council, I've tried to make a point to support all public safety and I consider the prosecutor's office a public safety and I've just, for me, and I'm only speaking for myself, I've got some hard times with the, with the timing. I did a little bit of a math real quick and like the transcripts, the witness fees, legal service and all that, about $65,000, I wouldn't have any problem at all with that. I would say, let's do it right now. Where I, what gives me pause is $64,000, actually a little bit more than that, in the salary increases for the deputy prosecutors. Not that I don't think they deserve that. If this was a budget meeting and this was included, I would vote yes immediately for it. What I'm concerned with is the timing of it and it being outside of the regular budget season. I feel like if we do this, we're going to open Pandora's box. This is a very similar situation with the sheriff had last time and we told him the same thing, wait, come and see us at budget time, put your increases in there, and he did that and we granted those increases. So, I feel like this is a little bit of a deviation from the precedent that we've already set. The other thing that I want to point out is, and I believe I said this when we, when we had our meeting, is for when it comes to like public defenders and those positions are a lot of time transitory positions anyways. Delaware County's been pretty blessed, a lot of our public defenders have been there a long time, but the majority of public defenders, most law offices won't hire anyone with less than two, three years' experience. So, they go become a public defender and then they get those two to three years' experience and then they move on to greener and better pastures. So, I think that that's pretty normal to have people moving on. I guess what I would ask if we've considered, what I would be more in support of, in lieu of the $10,698 salary increases for each deputy prosecutor, what about something similar to what Fred just did with a lateral transfer to lure some of these other deputy prosecutors with a five or $10,000 lateral transfer bonus or something along those lines? I just, just for me personally, outside of the budget season for any salary increases, it's hard for me to get there. But I want to state that I absolutely support everything you're doing and if we were having this conversation in August or September, it would be a quick yes on every single one of these. I just think the timing's a little bit weird for me.
If you look back at our emails, he did reach out to us in August, like, right, but the problem was, what happened is budgets were due on July 1st.
First, I rang the bell when I could. I can't tell you what problems there are before I know there is a problem, okay? And I think this instance is much different than those that you've cited in that if I can't hire a deputy, there's only 11 of us, okay? If I can't hire a prosecutor for Circuit 4, what am I going to tell the victim's family in a murder case that's coming up? I don't have somebody to try your case. What do you want me to tell them? That the county council won't fund it? And the other issue is, unlike any other department in the county, there's a specific statute that says the county council shall fund the prosecuting attorney's office in an amount that I seem to deem necessary, okay? What I've submitted, I deem necessary. There's a statewide study that says that I am 23 deputy prosecutors short. So, I suppose we can go ahead and vote on this or I can file a lawsuit for 23 more prosecutors. Well, I get what you're saying with that, but you're not asking for more prosecutors. I mean, you're asking for more money. I did that for the county council's behalf because there were some bills in the State House that may have alleviated that. Now, if that doesn't happen, I'll be here at budget time for more prosecutors. But right now, we're not talking about wants, these are needs. I need to stop the bleeding, okay? In a trauma analogy, I need to stop the bleeding now and I need the people in office. I cannot, as I said in the letters, which will trigger the, which will trigger the statute, I cannot fulfill my constitutional duties as prosecuting attorney of this county unless this is passed.
Mr. Hoffman, I got a lot of respect for a lot of what you guys do and you guys are working really hard, so I don't want to come off as adversarial. I feel like I have to state my position for the record. I'm not opposed to the salary increases, I understand the challenges that you're in. I guess what I'm getting at is, in lieu of $10,698 pay increase this month for the deputies who aren't going anywhere, could we consider, you have two openings, three openings, could we consider a $10,000 lateral transfer for those positions? Because really what you need is a couple more deputies. And then, when we have our budget season, I'd be more than happy to agree with the pay increase for everybody.
So, I don't understand how that's different.
It's different because it's breaking precedent of what we do. We don't do salary increases throughout the middle of the year.
Well, yeah, we know that that's, this is out of the norm, no two ways about that. But the dollars are the dollars and we did talk about the stipends and being, the stipend itself, the line item, the stipend being, you know, a little bit of a loose opportunity for you to use, also really tied to you because ultimately you may not be in office in a few years and if that happens, then those stipends can be adjusted or addressed by the council each year, correct? So, I did think we should try to put some guardrails around the stipends, we did talk about that. Not sure if that's something you, we discussed it at finance.
We did and I said I would put something in writing, the problem was I didn't, I hadn't had time.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
Looking for bones, I was in the morgue doing, looking at a homicide and for an autopsy, okay? I don't have time to do that right now, I'm telling you, we've got to stop the bleeding. And I can't give $10,000 to a new employee off the street when I have a whole staff of deputy prosecutors. They get the money and I don't and I'm telling you that if one or two more leave, that the criminal justice system in this county is coming to a halt. And I'm not going to be the one to explain to all the victims' families, the raped victims, the child molested victims, why I can't bring their cases to court. Because I've tried, I sent a letter in August, December, had multiple discussions with the council and here I am. And I'm telling you, the warning lights are flashing, I don't know how more blunt to be.
Well, and that, what you're asking for, that $10,000 and what, $698, that's to retain who you already have because you've lost individuals who have gone elsewhere to make higher salaries, so.
That's correct. And I may lose one more this year. And if that happens, Mr. Webb, and the two aren't filled, there's going to be serious problems.
I totally understand and I, and I guess...
They can't wait.
Also, what gives me pause is the timing of the letter we received in August was right after we did the salary increases for a lot of people. And I would speculate that some people were frustrated that certain people got significant raises, but we didn't have to speculate because you put it right in the letter that there was frustration that the court reporter got such a large raise and she wasn't making that much difference than what your deputy prosecutors were. And I agree with that, you're right.
It wasn't a frustration, Mr. Webb, it was a fact, it was a comparison, it was trying to show you why Delaware County deputy prosecutors are not competitive. I not only gave you that figure, I gave you the figure of every, almost every other county in the state who was hiring, if you'll recall, in the December letter, in that chart. I gave you salaries of other people. So, to say I was expressing frustration at the court administrator's salary is incorrect. It was a fact to compare this job to a deputy prosecutor's job as to why the salary is not sufficient. It had nothing to do with frustration, that's inaccurate.
Okay, I appreciate you clarifying it.
It's important to remember when you're talking about timing, we just had a discussion last month about, about filling Marta Moody's position and the need to be competitive. And as Eric has set out in detail, we're not even close to competitive in terms of salary. To attract a young attorney who wants to be a prosecutor, and reminder, these are full-time positions, they don't have any outside practice, they are full-time positions. You're just, a signing bonus isn't going to do it. They're going to be looking at salaries and, you know, when you have Elkhart paying up in excess of $100,000 for a criminal deputy, Delaware County's not going to get it. It's hard enough to attract attorneys to come to Muncie, you know, both on the civil side and government attorneys. It's not, it's not a destination for a lot of young attorneys. But I think, timing aside, wouldn't be my choice either, we've got to, we've got to fund the prosecutor's office so it can be effective. It's an integral part of our public safety system. And let me, let me just say that Mr. Webb has spoke his, he hasn't changed his position from start, he agrees with you 100% that you need it, he was just upset with the timing and we can put the rest of the county on notice that it's probably going to happen for anybody else. And let me also mention that we talked about the stipend and the rules for the stipend, I, I was one that brought that up because I've been through that before with another office and I told Mr. Hoffman that it would be nice to have that by budget season for next year and he was okay with that.
I hoped to have it, I hoped at that time at finance to have it today, but there were circumstances in the last week that didn't allow that to happen.
I knew that if I asked for it, you would be busier than one on Paperhanger and sure enough.
We all know how budget season goes, right? If we need to make cuts, we make cuts, right? So, if we have that by budget season, that would be delightful, so.
And let me also say that I agree with Mr. Webb, the timing isn't correct, but we've got to, but I also agree with Mr. Hughes that we need to do what we need to do.
And, thank you, I appreciate that in the comments. And the only other thing I have to say with timing is I can't control the timing of crime.
Yeah.
There could be 52 people killed today. I can't, in this county, I can't control that. In July, we had 10, Zach, 10 people killed in July and my budget was due July 1st. That's why I'm telling you, I knew at the end of July, when I wrote the August letter, I have a problem. I don't know how to fix it yet, that came in the December letter, okay? I can't control the timing of crime.
Eric, I know we do educational incentives for our employees, well, there's nobody who has more probably than the prosecutors. Could we, could we do the salaries now and the stipends at budget time to discuss that? Would that be an agreement we could come to?
With all due respect, Ms. Lester, I'd rather do it now. Again, the lights are flashing, I can't emphasize it enough. I lose, there's only 11 of us, okay? So, when you talk about policemen, you have the sheriff's department, Muncie Police, every town police department, the FBI, the State Board of Accounts, DNR, they all funnel cases to my office. If I don't have the prosecutors there, 11 of us, to file those thousands upon thousands of felony offenses, the system is going to stop, okay? And it's going to end up in a lawsuit. And all I'm telling you is that what I proposed, I believe to be reasonable. I could have come in here and said, well, like Mr. Hughes said, there are other deputy prosecutors in this state making $100,000. I didn't ask for that, I asked for 85 plus a minuscule stipend of, the highest one is $6,000, okay? I mean, if, I don't come in here and pad things to horse trade away, this is the bare minimum I need to function.
Well, first of all, like I said earlier, that I committed to you guys and I know there's, everybody reads, reads the newspapers and watches the news and there's a lot of prosecutors around the country who's not fulfilling their obligations. So, I appreciate the fact that you guys take these serious and you try all the cases that you feel that you need to try. However this shakes out, I have a feeling I'm on an island here, but however it shakes out, I feel like, I would hope that come budget time, which is only four months away, four, five months, something like that, that you do put in for a couple more regardless of however this vote goes.
Assuming that the effort of the state fails, I will.
Yeah, because if you're that short and, yeah, you definitely need a couple more.
Yeah, the study says 23, I'd be happy with two, maybe three.
And how close is the state to making that decision?
The State General Assembly, so, I mean, they could insert something. I mean, there were multiple bills, some have died, some have been shelved, you know, they could stick something in at the last minute on a reading and...
It doesn't look good right now, though.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
I was going to say, last I heard, it didn't look good because of something going on in another county.
Yeah, I agree, but then on the other hand, I've learned that who knows what's going to happen until the final gavel falls on that set.
Jane, to answer your question, April 29th, that's when the assembly is supposed to close, so it should be answered before then. Mr. Kaufman, I have a question, just for clarification. You've said multiple times that August, you realized that there was an issue. I'm assuming what you're saying is there was an issue with the transcripts, the witness fees and the legal service fees because what you presented to us is saying that you knew that the salaries were not where they needed to be prior to July 1. But your request was minimal based on a request from the previous council, is that correct?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Sure. What you asked for on the last budget season wasn't enough to get you up to par with surrounding counties.
For salaries?
For salaries.
Correct.
If you knew that prior to budget season, even though the council requested it, why didn't you ask for it then, knowing that your prosecutors needed to be competitive salary-wise?
Because we didn't have the crime wave that we had come July, August, September, October, November. So, I'm...
Regardless of your workload, if you knew salary-wise, they weren't getting paid enough, why didn't you ask for it then?
Because I try to be respectful of the council and when Mr. Alexander said, submit raises at 5%, I did that. Again, I, I didn't feel it was necessary at that time, hindsight is 2020. Now, I could come in from this point forward every year and ask for $200,000 for my deputies.
I understand, not being here...
I don't do that.
I didn't get that opportunity to sit on the council when that request was made. I just want to know if you knew then whether that statement was made prior to the budget request.
And you have to look at, you have to look at the crime load statistics, okay? I say there's 11 of us, if you're talking about 10 homicides, one of which is a triple homicide, death penalty eligible, you're not going to find people to try all of those cases unless they're compensated. And that didn't occur until throughout the month of July, so that I couldn't have foreseen what was going to happen in July, August and September.
Right, once you're talking about the workload.
Correct, which goes to retention.
And when would, when did you have some leave last year?
One left in October and one left in December, but I knew that was coming.
And your prosecutors are strictly salary, I mentioned, they don't get overtime, correct?
Correct.
So, it doesn't matter whether they work 100 hours on that case or an hour on that case.
These, these deputy prosecutors, as myself, they take home, they take work home every night, they work every weekend and when they try a case, they work non-stop, 24 hours basically, until the case is tried. There's not overtime, there's not comp time, even if I did give them comp time, what's the point? There's no time to use it. These people are dedicated to prosecuting criminal offenders, but it has to be competitive.
You know, Councilman Wyhead brought up a point, which was, and I'm glad you did that, because I totally missed me, but that was actually formed the basis of my entire position, was that we get a budget, there's a request, we granted that request, we didn't deviate from it, it was granted. So, in addition to the $10,698, it was already four, 5,000, I can't remember off the top of my head, but somewhere 5%, whatever that would have been, it was close to $4,000 that was given at that time. So, that's what formed my position from the get-go is, because we didn't reduce the amount that was asked for and Mr. Hoffman has stated that he put in what, what Councilman Alexander asked to put in, but that was kind of where I was at with it. Well, we gave you what you asked for, so it's kind of weird to come back just a few months later and say that that's not enough. So, I appreciate you explaining that and I said in our private meeting, I'm going to ask some of these questions, not to be adversarial, but to give you an opportunity to make your case. It may or may not change where I stand on it, but at least I wanted you to put it out there. So, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
President Piper asked me to go ahead and read the statutory reference that Mr. Hoffman has alluded to regarding councils' need to fund at appropriate levels. But before I do that, Mr. Hoffman, I just wanted to ask one question. Is it fair to say that the combination of the increased caseload due to all of the homicides last July after budgets were submitted, combined with the less than adequate salary, has put stress on the, on your deputies to perhaps look elsewhere? Would that be an adequate summary?
That is absolutely adequate, yeah. That is more than adequate.
So, it's not necessarily one issue, it's the combination of the issues that's putting pressure to look elsewhere.
You have a...
Combined with the ability to recruit.
Correct.
Thank you. I believe the statutory reference you're referring to is Indiana Code 333962H, which says the various county councils shall appropriate annually for the other, for other deputy prosecuting attorneys, investigators, clerical assistants, witness fees, out-of-state travel, postage, telephone tolls and telegraph, repairs to equipment, office supplies and other operating expenses and equipment, an amount necessary for the proper discharge of the duties imposed by law upon the office of the prosecuting attorney for each judicial circuit. So, that's a, the reference to which Mr. Hoffman was referring, saying that the council has an obligation to... saying that the council has an obligation to, to make adequate funding to his office to allow him to carry out his duty that's been imposed by law.
Which for traditional expenses is pretty cut and dry, right? If it costs X and we have to fund X. Salaries, I would assume, is probably a little bit more vague in that even though there's a shortage and he can prove a shortage, I'm sure there's some level of vagueness to what's properly staffed versus not, or what salary is not, you know, that type of thing.
I would agree with you on that, because that is, there would be, I think, a little bit more wiggle room on the prosecuting, or the deputy prosecuting attorney's side. But what you have is Mr. Hoffman telling you that he cannot fulfill his statutory duty based on all of the issues that he's described today. So obviously, I don't get a vote, I'm just explaining that he's, the alarm bells are ringing on his end, he's come to the council. You do have a statutory obligation. It's, I guess, that's where the sausage is made, so to speak, in between as to where you, where you come to an agreement. But just for reference, that is the statutory citation that he's referring to.
Well, the prosecutor is, is not new. He's been in front of this council for many, the county council, many years. He knew that if he turned in more than the five percent, our first question would be, we're going to cut the raise to five percent. Am I right?
Correct.
I think he's pretty well presented his case.
I would agree with that. I almost called it a tipping point, that, you know, post-budget submission last year probably was a tipping point of sorts, which, again.
And I, I, I feel like that if the fifteen thousand dollars is going to make this department whole, I can, I, I, and I've changed my mind back and forth many times. But I have much respect.
Jane, are you talking about the stipends when you say the fifteen thousand?
Yes.
Yeah, I, personally, I would like to see the written criteria before we would approve that. That's really my biggest hang-up with this. I know we need to fund this to make Delaware County deputy prosecutors competitive. I mean, it's, it's a, like you said, it's not a want, it's a need. But that stipend is what really hangs me up without some, just anything in writing to be able to review what is going to happen with that money.
So Eric, maybe you want to address that, only because we, because I did ask some of that, and you had mentioned, you had mentioned about the fact that, like, you can't view a Level One, Two, or Three deputy prosecutor as the criteria of sorts, basically.
Right, and so like, you know, with the police departments, you have captain, lieutenant, sergeant, and so on, okay? Different pegs. There's no such equivalent for an attorney or a deputy prosecuting attorney. I have said in writing, I believe in the December letter, what the stipends will be based upon is zero to ten thousand dollars based upon the number of years as an attorney, the number of years with the office, your trial abilities, your trial, you know. I hesitate to say, I can't say, you know, it can't be outcome-driven, that's unethical in terms of, you know, wins and losses, that's not the way we do justice. But your trial ability. And that's all already in writing, in the, in the letter that I sent in December.
And I think, as far as this request, which, you know, this and the request in the lit budget, you actually have given us the, the numbers and the, how they will, to whom they will be paid out of this request.
I did, and, and so the range.
That hasn't changed.
Right, that has not changed. The range is zero to ten thousand. The highest I'm asking for in any one deputy is six thousand, okay? It's not like I'm asking for ten thousand for every person. Again, it's something I deem reasonable. Going back to Mr. Freeman's point, there was an Indiana Attorney General opinion in nineteen sixty-five that addressed this particular statute, and it was interpreted that the amount that the county council shall appropriate is an amount which the prosecuting attorney considers necessary within reasonable standards in order that he discharge the duty imposed by law upon him. So it's already been interpreted, it's what I deem to be reasonable. And I'm up here telling you, I deem this to be reasonable. So, you know, should a court look at this, I think the answer is clear.
Can I ask you a question, one more question, Mr. Hoffman? I'm not going to go on and on about the other stuff. You know, I said, I said I don't want to lobby against you on it. But on those stipends, right, the fifteen thousand, you had mentioned you're like three positions short and a big part of.
Twenty-three.
Getting, yeah, twenty-three, but you have at least two openings right now, right, two to three? So assuming this goes through and your deputies get the eleven thousand, almost eleven thousand dollar increase, that would pretty much handle them as far as being, feeling like they're in a, a much better position. Have you considered, instead of that fifteen thousand stipend, making that like a, like a lateral transfer to, to bring someone in to fill the opening that you have?
Well, if, if things go, I don't want to speak out of turn up for many reasons, I don't like to tempt fate. But there's a, I have a potential person in mind for that spot. I've offered a contingent offer. She's a newer attorney, so she wouldn't get a stipend. So it's just as I, as things worked out, as the stars aligned, when I submitted that, that spreadsheet, there was a zero on that, that person, that, because it was unfilled. She, she just gets the, the base salary. So I'm not, she's not coming in with, you know, prior trial experience, been an attorney ten years or so on, so.
I see what you're saying, you're, you're wanting to recognize and reward the folks who've put in the work and, and who've gained all the experience.
Well, I don't, it's not reward, it's compensate them, yes.
Because this ten thousand, six ninety-eight becomes part of the base salary.
Correct.
Right, that's, that becomes their new base. That's just added to what we had already approved back in August. And I think back to the stipend issue, I alluded to it a little bit ago, too. Come budget season, if we want to rename that or change what that looks like and make it some kind of educational incentive, or keep it some kind of stip, have like clear rules set, we can do that in, by budget season. But as you've expressed, like, this is a need right now, and we can look at this annually. That's our, our job as council, anyway.
Well, I've had all, all my questions answered, and I appreciate it. I think everybody else here has had all their answers questioned, answered. I, 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 I would, I would support this entire, and so I guess I'll call for the question.
Thank you.
Moving on past the budget, or excuse me, the salaries. Looking into your foggy crystal ball from the first three months headed for four, legal service and witness fees, do you think you'll be back?
Have to have a motion for the question.
I know that's up there, question, you could have ten murders today, that would change.
I don't know that I can answer that.
Okay. I didn't know whether, I guess my question was, do you think you funded it per, per, for today? Do you think you'd make it through the year?
With the new, with the.
Yes, with the.
That was my hope, yeah.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and do, we've spent a lot of time with you, and you probably need to get back. So let's go ahead and do roll call on this first request. She, we had the question called.
Thank you.
So roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Even though I absolutely, one-hundred percent support this, I have to vote no at this time, but they'll pass.
Mr. Wyatt.
I also be, I'm going to vote no because of the stipend.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. It was originally motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. And if, so you can get out of here, if you don't mind, Tanya, can we hop down to his lit as well?
Sure.
Prosecutor lit. Going to go out of order here for a second, Denise, just a second.
You got something else, too?
Oh, yeah, four D.
He said he's got the high-tech, too?
And four D.
He has the next one.
We have the next one.
Get all aired out.
Okay, let's do four D, I'm sorry, yeah, we'll go ahead and just hit all of, everything Eric has, we'll knock those out for him.
Okay, next was Title Four-D, Family Support, two thirty-seven. B-one-oh-two Deputy Prosecutor, positive ten thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars. Total, ten thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Moved to approve.
Second.
I'm going to give that to Eugene, Ryan, you want the second?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, motion by Eugene, second by Ryan. Any questions? I think we kind of hit them all, but, all right, roll call, please. Oh, go ahead.
Well, this is, just to confirm, this is the one that's reimbursed.
Sixty-six percent by the federal.
By the federal.
All right, now roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
For the sake of consistency, no.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, moving on.
So we're jumping down the prosecutor lit?
Yes, please.
Is that what you want to do?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or is he high-tech crime, too?
High-tech, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. High-tech next, sorry.
Okay, High Tech Crimes Unit, eleven ninety-five. Four forty-one, Computers and Equipment, positive seven thousand dollars, for a total of seven thousand dollars.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, any questions?
This basically wipes out that account for the year.
Yeah, this, my understanding is that Chuck, the executive director of that, had seven thousand dollars left in the money that Ball Brothers gave him. So he's asking to move that over to Computers and Equipment.
Leftover at the end of twenty twenty-two.
Is it like anything specific, or just general computers and stuff, he's just moving it?
Just general.
Okay.
All right, roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, now prosecutor lit.
Okay, prosecutor lit, eleven seventy. Department one thirty-seven. One oh-seven Deputy Prosecutor, positive ten thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars. B-one-nineteen Deputy Prosecutor, positive ten thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars. D-one-oh-two Deputy Prosecutor, positive ten thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars. One seventy-one FICA, four thousand, seven forty-nine oh-four. One seventy-two PERF, six thousand, nine fifty-two eighty-five. One eighty-six stipend, this is the one that did read thirty thousand, five hundred, and by Finance Committee's request, they suggested fifteen thousand instead, making the total fifty-eight thousand, two eighty, eighty-nine.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene, any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
No.
Mr. Wyatt.
Because of the stipend, I'll also vote no.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I really do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
And then let's move back up to Edit.
Good morning, John Brook and Sarah Hodges for the Edit for the Commissioners.
Uh huh, yep.
This is a four million dollar appropriation, this is what we usually do in the first of the year to appropriate Edit money for the payment of bonds and to fund the plan for the upcoming year.
Oh. Edit eleven twelve, three hundred. Edit projects, four million dollars, total four million dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, second by Matt. All right, now continue.
This is our usual appropriation to fund the Edit Plan, pay the bonds in the Edit Plan, and fund the operations that we have in the Plan. It's a three-year plan, it was adopted in twenty-two, I think it was.
Do you have any specifics for the Edit?
It's in the Plan that was adopted by the Commissioners back last year. The Edit Plan has been published, and I think it's even on the website. So there are specific bonds that we have every year, so this is to help fund all that.
So for any citizen who just wanted to look into it, they could get on the website and check and see the details?
Yep.
What Plan Number is that, do you remember, Tommy, do you?
It's Fund eleven twelve.
This Plan, if you want to go call it the Plan Number, it started seven, one, of twenty-two, runs to June thirtieth of twenty-five. They don't have like Edit Plan Number One, or.
Right.
They used to have, didn't they?
Well, we revised it a couple times.
If they amended, it would be Amendment Number One, or, but there's been no amendments to this current plan so far.
Okay, I got you. All right, any further questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. Thank you, moving on.
Casa, twelve twelve. Three thirty-two Advertising and Recruiting, three thousand dollars, for a total of three thousand dollars.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Eugene. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, that concludes our financials and transfers. Would you like to read the motion?
Motion to approve financial transfers and to amend salary ordinance with like reductions.
Second.
Motion by Eugene, I heard Dan as the second. Roll call, please, I know, right? Roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
All the requests were favorable, right, at the finance meeting?
For the transfers.
For only the transfers, okay.
All right, so moving on with our amended agenda, we have an ordinance before us. Denise, you may have to correct the number.
Nope, we, we got it right.
Look at you, Ben.
Yep.
All right, so ordinance twenty, twenty-three dash zero, one, zero. This is an update to the salary ordinance that the council approved back in December. It appears that we left off, for the Highway Department, the pay for those with a CDL. I think it called out for those who don't have a CDL. So we needed to get that adjusted, and that came up during finance meetings. So Ben, would you like to read what we, what the update is?
Sure, so the ordinance that's before you, for those of you that are, have been on the council, council for more than three months, will remember that this is the, the revised and restated ordinance that's been put together, that, that compiled all of the prior tweaks that had been done to the part-time salary ordinance. This is a compilation of all of those, and then we've repealed and replaced it a couple of times in an attempt to try to keep all of those part-time salaries in one place that can be read without having to search through the prior versions of this ordinance or any amendments. The only changes that have been made, other than updating the, those whereas sections in the beginning with the new ordinance numbers, is if you flip back to Section Nine, which is the specific section dealing with the part-time salary levels, Section, or subsection B previously contained language regarding highway positions that did not require a CDL, stating that they would be paid fourteen dollars an hour. That has been removed. And then if you go down, there is a new subsection H for part-time Highway and Bridge Department employees. And then that fourteen dollar for non-CDL drivers has been put there. And then there's been another subsection there added for those that require a CDL, stating that their pay rate would be eighteen dollars an hour.
Do we have any questions for Tommy, or any questions for Ben?
I, well, I move that we introduce ordinance twenty dash, twenty twenty-three dash zero, one, zero.
Second.
Motion to introduce by Phil, and second by Yeh.
I do have one, one question.
Yep.
Yeah, Tommy Humbert, Highway Department.
Let us, let us vote real quick.
I think I need to talk to you before you vote.
Oh, hold on, we, this is just so we can talk about it.
Okay.
Yes. Roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Scants.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Mr. Wyatt.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, now we can talk about it.
Okay, so too late, Tommy. Too late, man. The, the one thing that I was going to say, and I should have said it before, we just need to add operator, equipment operator onto that with the CDL, because some of the operators that's going to be operating the tractors will not have a CDL, so it needs to be somebody certified for that, too.
So there's a certification for that?
Yeah, yeah.
So H2 would have operator added in with?
Yeah, just equipment operator added to that. Yeah, and I'm sorry about that.
So what, what is, I guess, just to be clear, what is the specific additional licensure or certificate that they would hold? It's different from somebody that would fall under that $14 an hour.
Yeah, and some, yeah, and some of them won't maybe carry it. They had a CDL before. They were equipment operator at the Highway Department. They gave their CDL up once they either retired and now they're going to come back and work part-time. Or somebody like, for, for instance, farmers, you know, a lot of the farmers have farmed for years driving tractors, and, you know, go off experience and stuff like that also.
And 150 miles, they don't have to have CDL. They can drive within 150.
Section nine, Eugene.
Is that right?
I don't know.
I believe farmers can drive like their farm equipment, as long as it's within 150 miles, they don't have to have a CDL. They can drive an 18-wheeler. They can drive all that.
I, I didn't know that. I didn't.
Yes. You've got 150-mile radius.
Yeah, you don't even got to have one.
I didn't know that. Okay. So anyway, yeah, I just want to see if we could add that in there for the operator. That's going to help on our tractor, our mowing and everything, too.
So wait a minute, I'm not, I'm not following. So we're trying to say highway and bridge department positions that require a CDL and/or or?
Yeah, and/or, yes, yes. Because, you know, this CDL will help us in the winter time. Let's just say, for some reason, we have 12 drivers come down with COVID. I mean, we could reach out with part-time money, and we could probably get somebody at this $18 an hour. It may never happen, but it's there instead of being...
That came up with that, what we thought would be a big snowstorm. I know that the commissioners were looking to try to get some of the local farmers to see if they'd be interested in helping with, with that snow removal, so...
Exactly. It's really not a big deal, but I just wanted to add that on there because I don't want to be misleading. Some of the guys that will be driving the tractors are operators that do not have, they will be, have been or trained operators. You don't necessarily have to be, have a CDL to be an operator.
Experienced operators, maybe.
Exactly.
Or save them a certificate.
Tommy, my question is, what you're asking to be added, that's still a highway and bridge department position, correct?
Correct.
So I think it's covered in the language.
Well, but it's part-time.
He said they won't, they might not have a CDL.
This says that require versus do not require.
You know, basically, Eugene, like you, if you want to mow for us part-time, you don't have a CDL, I mean, I know you've mowed for years and years. I know you have a past history. I'm going to be very selective on who I choose to mow because of the dangers and everything like that, but I can't require them to have a CDL to do that mowing. And this is going to attract my mowers. I can't get no mowers for $14 an hour.
Do we need to?
Yeah, we had one last year.
Make a motion to amend the, to add that in?
Yes.
You would, yes.
I hope all that makes sense before, before you make...
Well, that's helpful because like literally I got an email yesterday about this, so...
Yeah, yeah.
So thank you.
I have one more thing I want to bring up.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I have one thing that, and this, this may be relevant, it may not be, but I was looking at the requirements, and one of them is a high school diploma or Indiana high school equivalency. It, does it have to be Indiana high school equivalency? Like, I have a friend that just moved here from Florida. His boy's got a high school equivalency, but it's not an Indiana high school equivalency. Does that, Indiana have to be in there? I'm on page, like...
Which pos...
I was just, like, top of page four, there's an, oh, easy one right there, where it says must have high school diploma or Indiana HSC. My question is, does it have to be Indiana or just high school equivalency? And, and like I said, it may not even be relevant. I don't know how many people are moving here from out of state that fall into that category, but I don't want to exclude someone that we may be able to get based off of just some, one word.
Let's deal with one clarification at a time, then we'll get back to that. I agree with you, but let's try to get the right verbiage that Tommy wants.
Okay, so let's, let's go back to the language and H2, or double I. Do I have a motion to amend to add and/or equipment operator?
So moved. Second. Would you read it for clarification, please?
You want to read that for me, Ben, what that would read like?
Section nine, subsection H, item II, highway and bridge department positions that require a CDL and/or equipment operator, $18 per hour. Tommy, is that what you would like?
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
That's great.
All right, so roll call on the motion to amend section nine, subsection HII.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, so then back to the high school...
Back to Ryan and Gene's thing on Indiana high...
Yep, that's where I was going.
So that's not something that had been mod, that's from, that's just left over from the prior versions. I, I guess, if, I don't care, if you want to strike it and just have high school equivalent, I mean, that's at your discretion. I don't know that it necessarily needs to be, quote, Indiana high school equivalent. I also think the way it currently reads, I don't consider it to be an issue as written.
Okay.
Because I think an equivalency for another, an Ohio equivalent is likely very similar to an Indiana equivalent when it comes to the, the certificate. But if, if, for the sake of complete clarity, if the council would like to just remove the word Indiana and then just have, or high school equivalent, you certainly can. I'd like to do that.
Are you making a motion?
Yes.
All right, so a motion by Eugene and second by Ryan to strike the word Indiana from our in front of high school equivalent.
Before you call the question.
Yes.
Was there a question over here, Ms. Cantz?
So this is introduced. So are you planning on suspending the rules?
Yes.
So with those changes, I'll need a fresh copy before I can have them, have it signed.
We'll have, before we can have it signed?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
I can update it and email it to you, and we can print it.
So no one leave until we get it signed. Sound good, council?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Perfect. All right, so roll call on the motion to strike the word Indiana in front of high school equivalent.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Motion to accept the salary ordinance as amended?
You got to suspend the rules first.
Oh, excuse me, suspend the rules.
To be clear, it's not a suspension of the rules. The statute just requires unanimous consent of all members present to pass an ordinance on the same day that it was introduced.
Well, for salary ordinance, yes.
For, for any, for any ordinance, has to, we have to have unanimous consent in order to pass it on the same day that it's introduced pursuant to 36247B. So none of you can vote no if you'd like to pass it today. If, if one of you does vote no, it's not that it fails, it would just need to come back next month.
Next one.
Do we just go like a roll call for that?
So the motion is a motion to...
So I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as is currently amended?
Second.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, yeah, thank you, I'm sorry.
All right, so that was a motion to adopt as amended by Dan, second by Eugene. All right. Roll call on that.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. I'm following the advice of our attorney.
I think the confusion comes with the word suspend the rules. That would, the way I would interpret it, that would refer to rules put in place by this body for how it manages its own business. It's my understanding this council has never formally adopted any rules, so there are no rules to suspend. Under Indiana code, they do have the right to adopt an ordinance the same day with unanimous consent to adopt on the date, which is what just happened.
I totally agree with what you're saying. I'm just going on past history.
Sure.
Before they've ever done a separate reading on the same day, they've always done about to suspend rules in order to do it. So that's, I was just...
We're fine.
Appreciate you clarifying.
So, all right, so at that, now, so what are we voting on?
We're done. You just adopted.
We're done.
It's done. All right. Fantastic. All right, with that, let's move over to board appointments. It was brought to my attention by Fred that we need a council member to serve on the 911 board. I know Matt has expressed some interest in that.
You need a motion to...
Motion to just put Matt on the 911 board?
Second.
Second.
All right, motion for Matt, that comes from, I heard Dan, second, was that Eugene or Jane?
Jane.
Jane. Motion by Dan, second by Jane. Anyone else? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Flanagan.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, I do not believe we have any committee reports. Oh, you may have an update. Do you have an update?
Just an update on our committee to recommend rules. Jane and I have discussed this. If we could have any responses, any input that anyone wants to give by 15th of April, then we'll attempt to have a draft for the council to begin its review at the, at the April meeting. There is a Facebook survey that can, can be completed. If anyone needs a copy of the survey form, we can email it out, and I have some paper copies if anyone needs them.
And for those of you who work in the county, an email went out, I believe Denise sent out the link to fill that out online as well. So we set a deadline for that?
April 15th. April 15th, I'd like to, if we could have our responses by then, we'll obviously have more discussion after that, but...
Yeah.
That would give us time to get something in front of the council before the April meeting.
Fantastic. So April 15th, make sure you go back and check your old emails, folks, and it doesn't take that long to, to fill out. So, and then perfect example, we would actually have rules when it comes to suspending the rules, right? So...
Have, real quick, have, have you got much participation on feedback on that?
Kyle Johnson is, is monitoring the survey, and I haven't had a report from him, but he's going to compile the responses that come in through the, the survey online. I think, I don't know if we've had any paper copies submitted to the auditor's office other than, other than one, I believe, so far.
We've used Kyle before, is he not, he's not in here today, for like Delaware Community Corrections, we used it, used him to do all that as well, and we didn't get results until it was closed, so...
Oh, okay.
So that's pretty common. All right, any other committee reports? Moving on to new business, we have Brad Bookout here, and I think John Brook's going to present with him.
Good morning, Madam President, members of the council. I'm Brad Bookout with Delaware County Economic Development. I'm here with county attorney John Brook. We're not here to ask you for any money, so...
Or stipends.
Or stipends, or transfers, so hopefully this will be positive news. More than anything, the Delaware County Commissioners have encouraged myself, along with other associates in my office, Bill Walters and I, and attorney Brook, to try to get the rail spur of Delaware County repurposed and back into productive use. It's a difficult asset to market. It's a difficult asset to try to get leased. We've had some positive starts. We've had some positive or negative fails. I mean, it's just been a roller coaster trying to get that thing back into, to use. I'm happy to report that, and as I have shared, or John Brook or I, with most of you, that we've been in conversations with a company called SMR Concrete, Smurda Ready Mix, who would like to use the spur for positive productive use. We're here today to make you aware of the project. I know that attorney Brook has just informed me that I think there's a couple other steps that have to happen, but he'll brief you on that before you can approve. Nonetheless, this is a lease-to-purchase that the county would sign for the project. There was a variance that the company had to get approved with the Town of Yorktown Board of Zoning. That happened two weeks, a week and a half ago, so we're in positive steps to move forward. The company's anxious to get the spur into productive use, bringing cement into the spur. They would construct a tower at the site, silo basically, that they would put the cement into. They would then load trucks at that silo and ship the cement all over Indiana and the Midwest. And so positive points for this is it gets the spur back into use with a reputable company. Smurda Ready Mix is the largest concrete company in the United States. It gets the spur back onto the tax rules, which we're all happy with. It allows for a nine-and-a-half million dollar taxable investment to be constructed with the silo. It adds 10 to 15 new positions at the spur within the county. The company will take over the maintenance, mowing, signal inspections, saving the county money with that. This helps with the concrete shortage. If you're familiar with concrete contractors or you're any contractors, you know there is a concrete shortage in the United States. This frees up funding for infrastructure, other infrastructure improvements within Park One, as I've talked to some of you about, that there are some needs there. This will also allow for the payoff of the bond with the rail spur, which will save the county $52,686 per Baker Kelly's summary of that. So, John, do you want to talk about the legal process?
The process is that the commissioners have to hold a public hearing, and they'll hold that hearing on the 17th at their meeting to discuss the lease and sale. Since this is a lease of greater than $50,000, it also has to be approved by the council. And a sale of property for more than $50,000 has to be approved by the council. This is a lease-to-purchase arrangement that the lease will go for seven years, and then the purchase price will be made, or purchase price will be done at the end of seven years. Seven years is to run out the term of the EDA grant that was given to the county back in 2014. According to the rules of the EDA, Economic Development Administration, there is a 15-year usable life that they have for their grant for this rail spur. So 2029 is when that usable life will be up, and then the rail can, the spur can be transferred, but it'll be a lease until that time. They'll be paying 200 and some odd thousand dollars a year for the lease. They're paying one point, what, $5 million as a, as a lease option purchase, and the, the balance will be paid at the end of the lease term. We've run this by EDA. They're good with it, and we just have to jump through a couple hoops, and then we'll present. I already presented a resolution to your council that I need to make a couple changes to, but there'll be a resolution for you to approve at the meeting in April, after commissioners conduct their public hearing, and we'll report to the council what happened at the public hearing.
You say this will pay off the rail spur bond?
Yes. The intention is to pay off that bond.
It's only 52,000?
The savings.
The savings is, yes, correct, because it's, there's some early redemption penalties, but still gets rid of a bond issue.
As I said, when we spoke on the phone about this, this is all great news, and appreciate you guys working hard behind the scenes to market and, and give companies for things people, people aren't even thinking about. I don't even think most people forgot about that rail spur, you know? That was a big cost to the county back then, so I'm glad to see us be able to recruit that investment. So, great job on that. So, great job on that.
This is, it was originally constructed for Brevini, as we're all mostly aware. Brevini made a $36 million investment, which we're happy about. I'm glad they made that investment in the county, that's been taxable, assessed value for the county. Despite their project not working out, Muncie Power Products has found a good home with that building now. They are making improvements to the building, it will be a nice asset. They do not have use for the spur, we have already vetted that with Muncie Power Products, and so the spur is available. A few years ago, we worked with a company called Good Industries, pre-pandemic. Good was building a book of business to ship products via the spur. Once the pandemic happened, unfortunately, the business development agent contracted COVID, and unfortunately did not, he passed away, and so that effort failed, and so we're back to a point where we needed to get the spur back into productive use. The Commissioner said, find somebody that can use that spur. We need it on the tax rolls, we need somebody out there using it, we need a train going down it. Since the last three years, Norfolk Southern has used it as an offloading area for track maintenance and just a lay-down area, so it's a big, good, positive development for the park.
Great job to you guys and the Commissioners.
Appreciate the update. Any further questions for Brad or John?
See you next month.
Sounds good, sounds good, thank you. We'll see you then. Moving on to elected official and department heads. All right, well, I'll take this opportunity then. For those of you who are unaware, I think most people in this room are aware, but Donna is retiring, which is really exciting for her, but super sad for the rest of us selfishly. So, I just want to say, I'm going to get emotional, thank you. I mean, I've been up here, yes.[627.54][627.54][applause] My time on council, I've learned a ton from Donna, and she's been a huge resource, not only to the Auditor's Department, but to us as council as well. So, like, still come around, we still want to see you.
I'll be here next month for drinks.[644.41][644.41][laughter]
I probably have worked with Donna as long as anybody. Sometimes I was her boss, and sometimes she was mine. I think more times than not, she was mine.
I used to ask her, how long have you worked here? She'd ask me something crazy, you know? But now, I've enjoyed it, I've enjoyed the challenge, and I totally, I worry about the finances, you know? That's my worry, what you guys might do, but I appreciate, especially the ones that have been here for a long time, how we finally got everything back on track, and we have a good operating balance, we're not far from having more.
So, are you going to, I thought I heard a rumor that you're going to still be on board on a contract basis, is that true?
Yep, somebody needs to.
Awesome. Well, that makes me feel a whole lot better.
Right.[705.12][705.12][laughter] Makes us all feel a lot better. Nothing against Tanya, but it does make us feel better.
She's learned a lot, I'm sure she's still going off some questions, and especially, she's only been through one really budget, and one really big December settlement, so because she takes wonderful notes, I grew all kinds of stuff for her, and call me whenever she needs me.
How many auditors have you been through?
Nine. Wow.
And I guarantee you, she was loyal to all of them. Donna has always been loyal.
Well, it's been a pleasure.[744.82][744.82][laughter]
That happens sometimes.
There's only one.
Well, I appreciate you. For the two years I've been on the council, you've been a great wealth of knowledge, and you've always been able to answer the questions when I was, didn't know what I was talking about, so I appreciate everything you've done.
A lot of things that, you know, I tried to think of right now, but up here, remember, Tiedman writing little things down for Tanya, she knows the resources to find...
No computer like the human brain, right? I told my son one time, the brain is the world's biggest computer, and he looked at me and he went, "Has he got any games on it?"[789.23][789.23][laughter]
Sounds about right.
I just heard Donna say yesterday, when we go to conference, Jane would say, "You
can do anything you want to."
It's good.
You finish it.
We might get in at 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning, we were clocked at 8:30.
All right, well, another round of applause for Donna, thank you.[820.12][820.12][applause]
It's about the dormant, I sent you an email...
Oh, yes, yes, this is great news for everyone, so please share, Ed.
I don't have the dollar amount, but I'm going to let Donna speak about...
Becky, well, I printed it, Becky went through, every year we talk about dormant funds, and if something's been dormant for three years, we can move it. And so Becky went through, found these funds, I emailed all the depart, some of them had like $25, little amount, so we've always given that department the opportunity, "Please use this money so we can clean these funds off." Well, inheritance tax has $90,000 in it, and so this has been an issue since the law changed in 2013, where you don't have to come and pay inheritance tax no more. Back at that time, we sent in quarterly reports, the state got so much money, county got 8% of it, county general. So, we had all this money still in the treasurer's books, past bookkeepers, tried to get it balanced, past auditors, so I emailed the Board of Accounts and said, "We have this money, I don't know what to do with it, I would like to deem it a dormant fund," and we, county general, Board of Accounts could not answer my question, even though Ricky at the Board of Accounts has been through our audits, she used to do the audits, so she knew the situation. So she referred me to the Department of Revenue. So, I got a very nice woman named Jane, she was kind of new, but she had all the, could look up all the past history. So she got with the attorney, and she says, "I can almost guarantee you, if you owed us money, we'd have then been after you." She said, but she's got a rent too, so she got with the attorney, they decided it's not their money, and so we've always brought it before council, have council vote that we can move the dormant fund to county general. This is going to help you with what we just had to do today, so there's $90,000 that nobody knew you was going to get, so bless you.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Did you get that opinion from the Department of Revenue in writing?
Yes.
Okay.[978.32][978.32][laughter] Just to be clear.
Oh, yeah.
I forwarded that opinion to all the council yesterday.
Okay, good.
So, $90,198? And nine cents.
Yep, and nine cents.
Lovely.
Thanks for that parting gift, Donna.
Yeah, that was a great gift.
Do we have any other dormant accounts out there that have...
Becky, we never had any that was...
Significant like that.
Couple thousand maybe, but some were like some grants money that people haven't used, like Kyle Johnson, he didn't realize he even had $500 left in one, he said, "Oh, I'm going to use it." The old deer fund, it had some money in it, and he's going to use it.
Of course he will.
Because it's for educational, you know, it could only be used for educational supplies. They didn't realize they'd been leaving their dormant, I think 2015 or something, so they're going to, so far, the little ones, I think everybody's going to use, and Becky's going to keep an eye on it. If they don't, maybe towards the end of the year, she can come and say, "These people didn't use it, let's move it."
That's great.
So that fund will totally be eliminated from our records when it's had a zero balance?
Becky will make it an inactive fund.
Okay.
It won't, that way she doesn't have to keep carrying it in case, I know some law changes again, but she really can't make it inactive as far as it not showing up, because believe it or not, there are still very old inheritances still coming in. In 2020, we got $235, and in 2022, we got $14. And these are still old ones, where the county gets 8% of that inheritance, so these are very old, because the law, like I said, the law died in 2013, so there's still some, might trickle in, but the thing is, when that money does come in, it should automatically go to county general, because it's the county's 8%, not into the inheritance fund.
Well, great.
Thank you.
We always like to hear like positive news, right?
Yeah.
So that's a fun one. I did hear back from Kyle Johnson, he said 25 surveys have been submitted for our council rules, so that's where we sit right now, so make sure you go do those. Any other, so you get...
Yes, move it.
Oh, yeah, we can, do I have a motion to...
So moved.
All right, motion by Dan, second by, was that Eugene or Jane?
Jane.
Jane. Roll call please.
Ms. Langen.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes, of course, yes.
Becky, I'll keep editing the forms.
Yeah. Lovely. All right. Got Coroner up there, Gavin, what do you got for us?
Gavin Green, Delaware County Coroner. I just wanted to give an update, sorry that I wasn't here last month, but as of today, we've had 143 cases, we're averaging about one and a half to two people per day that are passing, that we're sending out. I've not broke down, I'm going to have a first quarter report, review of all of our coroners, what the caseload is. As I talked to some of the council people, the way that we restructured and redesigned the job descriptions, to have Reanna go out on calls during the day if I'm not available or the chief deputy isn't, is paying off, and so that's kind of where we're at right now. One of the things that we're going to be working on that you'll see next month is memorandum of understanding between Sheriff's Department, Muncie Police Department, EMS, fire agencies, to see how we can work with them so we all have an understanding. I'm also updating our computer systems. Out of the seven computers that we have, only one computer has Microsoft products installed on it, so I can't even pull our own VIP information and look at it, modify it, I have to go to our lead investigator's office to do that, so we're trying to, we have a price together, so I need to talk with the Commissioners to possibly upgrade those, so that's why the kind of delay is because I have to use my personal computer in order to try to manipulate some of that stuff. So, that's where we're at right now. Do you have any questions in the Coroner's Office? I can say, as, I did want to make this, when Eric was up here, he and I were together at 9:30 at night, walking that field in Eaton, and he was still in his dress clothes and slacks, walking through, so it wasn't like he had jeans on and his boots, he was still in his dress shoes, walking around. And for the lateral transfers, it's surprisingly enough, I've talked to the, one of the deputies in Hamilton County, I know we cannot compare Hamilton County to Delaware County, but coroners are also being laterally transferred and applying. The lateral transfer for just a deputy over in Hamilton County is $50,000. So, with that being said, again, we can't compare, but a caseload is a caseload, people dying, then you have to look at the tax revenue and everything, but the person that passes away, a person that passed away, and exactly what Eric said, talking to those families and those loved ones at any given time, it's crucial, so the response time and having the deputies available is tremendous. So I just want to say, it's not just from that side of the prosecutorial side, we're also seeing as well too, so.
The 143, is that comparative to, is that a high?
It's a little bit lower. I think that we are, I think that we are coming out of possibly COVID pandemic, we have seen a spike, there is a spike in Xylazine, it's a very potent drug that they're cutting fentanyl with and heroin, and they're just trying to mix everything up to get high. We've had, we've seen a spike, we have like, let's say, five overdoses in one day, and then we might go a couple days and have none. So I think that just with the COVID and everything, I think we're coming down off of that, we've seen a little bit of a spike, but I think it's a little bit lower, knock on wood. I know that doesn't really help my numbers when I come to budget season, but I really do hope that we aren't having that many cases. But every single one of those death cases that come to murder and go to trial, the Coroner's Office is also involved, and we have all those reports that we have to go along right with the prosecutor, deputy prosecutors, our forensic pathologists that we hire and everything else.
Do you have any money in your copy be fund to help buy computers?
I will ask, I will ask Reanna. I was going to see if I could have that like $19, and I need to find $435.
I thought it was in there, $19.
I don't know, I was just joking, what you said, but...
I haven't looked at your balance. As part of your... You have $5,000, just a thought.[1438.12][1438.12][laughter]
I have a motion to get that right now, okay.
Get money in that copy be fund all the time, and I wasn't sure how much it'd build up, but a lot of times, when council knows this, you know, they'll say, "Can you, you got any money in your other funds to help?"
Perfect. Thank you.
Be a little quicker to get it, if you ask the other.
Okay. And one of the questions about leading, I think last year we ended with 652 cases, so over three a day on average, but like we said, in July, we had 10 homicides, so that will throw numbers off. I mean, 10 out of 600 plus, it's just a small amount, but still, that's kind of what we fall in, so.
Out of...
We had the fire that had the three fire fatalities in the car, about a month and a half, February 27th or something like that, so, yep.
So with your computer upgrades, are you going to be including getting rid of your typewriter and getting something, or are you guys still getting on to that?
So, about the typewriter, we did use the typewriter for typing out verdicts, but I've actually been talking with the head state registrar, the local health department, and we are, I would probably say right now, in the past month, we're probably 80% paperless right now, whereas we were probably, I'd say, 40% paperless, but we are slowly getting there, but I don't want to make too many changes too quickly, just slowly but surely, so.
Good job on that, going from 40 to 80.
Yeah, just like the, when it was told to departments to, if you have money, spend it before you, I think I have enough paper to supply the whole entire county building for the next three years, and going paperless is kind of funny, so, yeah. And I do have this, I do have this typed up that I'll send to all the council people, so it's on record too, so.
Make sure you copy Denise.
That was my number one person, then everyone else would get CC'd.
We're all the CC'd, okay. Got it. All right. Well, thank you, Gavin. Sheriff, I'm going to put you on the spot for a second, do we have any federal inmate update? Sorry.
Tony Skinner, Delaware County Sheriff. Yes, we do, we are negotiating the rate right now, so.
Okay.
I'll talk to you, I'd like to speak with you and Ben afterwards for a moment, if you could.
Yeah, for sure. Thank you. That's exciting.
It won't be as high as we thought last year, but they really started with a low-ball number, so I think it's going to end up somewhere where we're happy, but I'll talk to you about it.
All right, sounds good, thank you. All right, public comment, we have one who has signed up, Rick Yenser, would you like to?
My name.
Yeah, that's you.
Thanks for affording me the guarantee of speech under the Constitution of the United States. Two things that haven't been mentioned today, which taxpayers, citizens are already getting notice of, is their tax bills. And I've noticed, like some tax district said last year that they weren't raising taxes, well, taxes went up. Taxes always go up because you have a county assessor that continually increases the value of land, houses, businesses, farms, but a couple tax districts in general, Dan, Yorktown taxes went up extremely, and I know why. You spent money you didn't have, you borrowed against us, and we're stuck for 20 years. I noticed something else in the legal ads, because we always watch that, because you're required by law to report investments and cash balances, and I thought I was, I thought it was a mistake, but others confirm that you're sitting on, or at least on December 31st, you sat on an $82 million cash balance. Now, nowhere in the history that I've been around in the last half-century, I couldn't remember that kind of mass accumulation of money by any government or schools, but I know the schools are sitting on around 30, 32 million, but they, the community gave to them to keep the schools open. Couple other things come to mind in this form of government, that when somebody like a prosecutor, a judge, or public safety asks you for money, there shouldn't be a lot of crosstalk. And I do have a thank you for government. Apparently transgender youth and adults will be gathering on assembly out here at the county building on Friday around 5:00 o'clock, and thank you again for assuring them the guarantee of assembly under the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. All right, and that concludes our public comment. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 25th, same place, same time, 9:00 AM. With that, I'll entertain, excuse me, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Jane, second.
All right, motion by Jane, second by Dan, roll call please.
Ms. Langen.
Yes.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes.
Ms. Cantz.
Yes.
Ms. Lassiter.
Yes.
Ms. Webb.
Yes.
Ms. Wyed.
Yes.
Ms. Piper.
Yes. All right, and we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.